Um, lining everything and showing the details of it, so.
We have, we have another question and uh, if, if, when we, if we have, we have a motion here and it may not be necessary to do a presentation, it may not be necessary with the document here. So give me just a moment, let me see this question.
Yep, also, Mr. Gallin, um, appreciate you all coming, Mr. Fletcher and everything and um, went over everything, went over the graph and awesome presentation, um, kinda straining to see it. And you know, if you, if you remember, last year when you all come, I, I asked about the fuel and everything because the fuel, um, the selling of the fuel was low. And so with that said, I mean, and, and listening to you with, um, air traffic, all those coming in, fuel prices has risen and so we doing good. And also, um, this guy, his resume and the guy that's agreeing to do all this, he gonna be a one man show out there?
He's still gonna have the volunteers, I can tell you that, cause I mean, I, I, I enjoy doing things and lots of stuff I do out there fixing things.
But the forty-two, the forty-two thousand that you all are asking for, uh, that line item, that's to cover that guy and all and everything that he's, you know, from inside and out. Yes, sir, okay.
Alright, do we need the presentation? Are they ready to vote? Uh, thank you for your hard work.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you so much. Uh, those in, any more discussion? Those in favor use voting sign of aye, those opposed use voting sign of nay. Ayes have it on resolution twenty-seven, twenty-one. Resolution thirty-two, twenty-one presented by the mayor.
Resolution number thirty-two, twenty-one, a resolution of the city council of the city of Camden, Arkansas, approving the mayor's decay and consent of votes to public works employees.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second.
And it is second. Ready for, for discussion?
Yes, sir. Also, um, on last month, we, we tabled this and I think Sister Donna was gonna bring us some information back or if we could do because I was asking, instead of the twenty-five, um, I was asking the council, could we do a hundred dollars? Uh, Kevin had gave a number, uh, twenty people and we'll be looking at five hundred dollars versus two thousand dollars and, um, I think, uh, Ms. Donna was saying something about being audited and, you know, twenty-five dollars versus a hundred dollars, so. Either way on, on the twenty-five or the hundred or?
Yeah, regardless of how much it is.
I think that's gonna help us some.
Right, so we sent this out after the meeting, so I think the question about whether or not the minimum, the minimum is free, it has to be taxed, the mom was low enough. Uh, so we, uh, with, with the knowledge of the research, we sent this out right afterwards and it does mention, um, gift certificates or achievement awards, but specifically says it cannot be disguised wages, uh, must be part of a meaningful presentation and you gotta have a, you know, a ceremony and it cannot be cash, cash equivalent vacation meals, tickets, so I mean, uh, that pretty well cuts out any kind of gift card, any kind of meal card, anything like that. Uh, so anything that's considered, uh, going to an employee is going to be considered taxable income. That would basically just leave it up to the council to, uh, come up with an amount that would, that would, that would cover enough what you want to pay them plus covering tax. So, so, so if we're giving them twenty-five dollars, the council really needs to say we're gonna pay them forty, forty dollars, thirty-five or forty dollars, knowing that, okay, you got fifty percent off, if you want to give them a hundred dollars, we need to say we're gonna give them about a hundred and thirty dollars, uh, knowing that some's gonna come and taxes and it's not gonna be the same for each individual person because each individual person's tax rate is gonna be different. So it is true that one person's gonna end up making one oh five, one gets ninety-five. But, but I mean, the way the council has to do is just to say we're giving a bonus, which was the council allowed to do, but if it were, give them a decent bonus, but I really don't think there's a way to, uh, try and bypass it and try and say this is not really compensation and it's some kind of gift, it's just, it is what it is and it's gonna be considered income.
Yep, and again, uh, Mr. Fry, thank you and Donna for that information, that is very helpful and, um, again, wanna commend, um, Chris for even bringing this up to, uh, do something for our public works, but, uh, with that said, um, I still would like to, and it's up to the council, I would like to see us do the hundred.
So you're making a motion to amend?
I'd like to make a motion to amend the, uh, resolution thirty-two, twenty-one and instead of twenty-five dollars, um, amend it and make it a hundred, if it's okay with the council. I'm putting it in the form of a motion.
Motion to amend. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Is there any discussion on the amendment? No discussion on the amendment? Alright, those in favor use voting sign of aye, those opposed use voting sign of nay. Now we need the motion to approve as amended.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second, is there any more discussion? No more discussion, those in favor use voting sign of aye, those opposed use voting sign of nay. Thank you. We have completed our old business, which moves us now to new business. Resolution number thirty-four, twenty-one introduced by the mayor.
Resolution number thirty-four, twenty-one, a resolution of the city council of the city of Camden, Arkansas, confirming the appointment of Stacy Breland to the planning commission board of directors.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and second, are we ready for discussion? I do want to say on tonight that Mr. Stacy Breland is present, Mr. Breland, will you please stand? We're happy to see you present on tonight, thank you. Alright, um, those in favor use voting sign of aye, those opposed use voting sign of nay. Resolution thirty-four, twenty-one passes. Resolution thirty-five, twenty-one introduced by the mayor.
Resolution number thirty-five, twenty-one, a resolution of the city council of the city of Camden, Arkansas, approving the appointment of Lauren Robertson as the city treasurer.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
It's been moved and second, are we ready for discussion? Those in favor use voting sign of aye, those opposed use voting sign of nay. Resolution number thirty-six, twenty-one introduced by the mayor.
Resolution number thirty-six, twenty-one, a resolution of the city council of the city of Camden, Arkansas, confirming the appointment of Richard Mosley to complete Jay Paul Hartler's term to the housing authority board of commissioners.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
It's been moved and properly second, are we ready for discussion? Those in favor use the voting sign of aye, those opposed use the voting sign of nay. Ayes have it on resolution number thirty-six, twenty-one. Resolution thirty-seven, twenty-one is introduced by the mayor.
Resolution number thirty-seven, twenty-one, a resolution of the city council of the city of Camden, Arkansas, amending the budget for twenty-twenty-one of decorating funds for overtime in the public works department and for other purposes.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved and properly seconded, are we ready for discussion?
Uh, real quick, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Um, the pool, um, I know we discussed, um, on last month, you know, what we was doing, so, um, Dr. Franklin can do what he need to do with his men for us overtime and stuff like that, but, um, I see we taking away from the pool and we're not gonna open up the pool because of COVID and everything, but what are we gonna do with the pool? I mean, it's, what, 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 what are, what are the plans?
I have talked with every company within probably five hundred miles to get them to come work on our pool. And the response is, we got enough work where we are, we don't need to come to Camden. The guys in Little Rock, we got enough work in Little Rock, I've talked with the guys in Shreveport, Texarkana, and nobody wants to come work on our pool. Part of it because it's really old and the other part is, they got enough work where they live. The closest one I had was the people that did Cross the Pool, they are from Kansas City, Missouri. That's the closest one I can get that's willing to come do anything to it.
So, so, I, I'm, I'm sorry, real quick, give, can you give us a synopsis of?
The problems?
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I know, we, man, we bought pumps and we did this, but, you know, I mean, what's, you know, just a quick rundown.
The pool is, uh, the pool is five hundred thousand gallons.
Yep.
Every hour, all five hundred thousand gallons should be drained out, filtered and pumped back in.
Right.
Well, the jets and the pumps don't work good enough to do that. It takes about two days to do that, this should happen every hour. Uh, what you're doing is water draining out, it's been filtered clean, pumped back in. The jets don't work on the, uh, east end of the pool. The jets only really work on the west end down by the ninth. And so if they all don't pump water out, there's no way to get it all back going through, it has to bounce out. It's not even remotely close, all the jets are under the concrete. Running from the pump house, under the concrete, it's gonna take a major problem, a major overhaul to get the concrete up, get the jets, we tried to blast them out when it was empty and we couldn't get it done and I think this has been a problem for a long time. Is they pump right now, to get the pool drained, I guess for the last ten or fifteen years, we, they and now we get a pump and we pump the water out probably the wrong way. But that is the only way we can get it out.
So you've been some pumping it out till?
Basically, yes. So that is a big issue, uh, so where it will take a pool, uh, out of overturn, it takes us pretty much two days to get the water to return itself back to normal, which makes us have to shock it more than we normally do, which causes the chemical price to go up because we're using more chemicals than we would normally use.
Yeah, and, and, and the reason I asked you, Kevin, um, you know, um, like I said, I know we're not gonna open this summer, but if it's something that we could be working on, Lord's will maybe for next summer. And know that this is not gonna happen tomorrow, next month, it's gonna be a while, like I said, it's gonna be a major overhaul and if we need to, you know, if we could be looking into doing something, you know, trying, you know.
It's a, almost a lose, lose situation, what I mean by that is this, we spend a lot of money, the chemicals on the pool. The first storm comes through and we get all of the, we're in a hole and we got trees around us. The first storm comes through and everything we've done to make it ready, you get the, 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 the limbs, the stuff comes in, it kills all of it almost immediately. And it'll take us two or three days, I wish we could put it somewhere else, to be honest, I wish we could. It's, it's in a really bad spot, even if we get the pool overhaul, the price of chemicals, if you go look at chlorine right now, it's unreal. It's gonna cost us a lot of money to keep it up because any little wind blows and you got all the pine trees around, uh, within twenty minutes, everything that we done to get that pool ready to go is gone, so it gets dirty. It's just in a really bad place, to be honest.
Yes, sir.
Just a quick question, if we were gonna prioritize this going on, and I've talked with you a little bit about it, looked at it over the years, we ran it for a while. You know, we talked about sculpting that drainage system. I always thought that was the number one priority because if we don't know how to stay in drainage, imagine we'll leave it alone. But you gotta, you gotta get scoped out, uh, I, I even talked to some people, I'll tell you, I'm talking, nobody wants to come to Camden because of the amount of money, it's not Camden, it's the job. You know, why, why, you know, companies saying, why can't I come down there and make me thirty, forty thousand dollars when I can go over here and make a half million dollars? Because after the pandemic opened back up, it's business everywhere. So they going with the big business and it, and, and I tell people, it's not personal, it's business. So I think we just, my suggestion is we prioritize what we can spend right now for future results, but we gotta find out how to drain that pool and get those jets open. Because if you don't do that, I'm, I'm like Kevin, chemicals will kill you, nevermind chemicals, I buy them every day, it will kill your budget. So we gotta fix it so it's gonna be operational before you try to get it straightened out so everybody can swim in, it's not gonna last, it's a waste of money. And that's just business, right?
Yes, sir.
Um, two quick things, alright, number one, back in February, I told everybody the price of chlorine was gonna go through the roof and we needed to switch over to a salt pool and I got laughed at by everybody in this room, alright? So that's number one. What would it cost us to gut it and put modern technology in that pool?
I had checked that, but I can't, I did ask, I had been getting people about changing it to a saltwater pool. That would cost us quite a bit of money also, but it may, it may work better in the long run.
But if we were to gut it, replace everything with modern technology and make the crossover at the same time, I know it's talking about a lot of money, we gotta have something to, for the people of Camden.
Right, I agree.
Can, can we get a guesstimate on how many billions of dollars that's gonna cost us?
And if I might ask, you talk about it, you gotta cover it, it's gotta be covered.
Maybe we can get a sponsorship.
And that was, I was gonna say, I mean, if, if y'all wish, if that was looked at, uh, that's probably been a decade ago, some of the people were using the pool was the option at that point was how we cover such a nice facility, five hundred thousand gallons, it was, it would be expensive, but there was a discussion about, uh, you know, different entities trying to combine to do it because that was, that was right, because you got COVID, you mean, you're right. And that wouldn't really change the nature of what you could do with it, but it would all be expensive. If you're always depending on the saltwater, you, that's, might be something to consider. It was definitely, a lot of people paid for it back out, really long ago.
And, and, and I won't hurt, but a lot of the cities invested into it, did it and it paid for itself. There will be some, uh, some, uh, things for our swim meets, they would have them here, we could actually do it, but right now we're not busy doing it, we could have swim meets here on a regular basis.
Alright, and our children are now driving the hea- health works out of town. So we have the force resolution thirty-seven, twenty-one to amend the budget for public works overtime. Do we have any more discussion on the overtime of public works? Or any at all? Alright, so now, uh, any more discussion, okay, those in favor use voting sign of aye, those opposed use the voting sign of nay. The mayor will also introduce resolution thirty-eight, twenty-one.
Resolution number thirty-eight, twenty-one, a resolution of the city council of the city of Camden, Arkansas, confirming the appointment of Jason Sletchers to airport commission.
Like to make the motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and second, are we ready for discussion? I have a question, he wouldn't, would he be working, he's not the worker that we're hiring?
No.
Okay.
No, 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 and I, and I think in the package, there was a biography resume included and, and, and that was actually from when he was appointed as executive, that's fairly recent, but, but just so you see that that's also the same as a few months ago.
Alright.
He's a change, he's a non, right now, he's a non-voting member and then he's changed from a non-voting member to actual member for the last term, uh, that resignation and so he can fill out that person's.
Those in favor, any more discussion? Those in favor use voting sign of aye, those opposed use voting sign of nay. Ayes have it. The mayor will also introduce resol- resolution number thirty-nine, twenty-one.
Resolution number thirty-nine, twenty-one, a resolution of the city council of the city of Camden, Arkansas, confirming the appointment of Charles Gaston to the airport commission as an executive G O member.
Like to make the motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, is there any discussion? Those in favor use the voting sign of aye, those opposed use the voting sign of nay. Thank you so much, is there any other business before council on tonight?
I have some business. I guess first, first one, uh, would be directed to, um, Dr. Wooten, um, talked to Dr. Wooten the other night at the, uh, first Friday and everything, but my, um, constituents, mainly the ones on Maple Street, the resident at three twenty-five Elliot Street, they wanna know when.
Well, right now, the lady lost her son.
Yeah.
And it's, it's been a while, it hasn't been a while.
Yep, yep, yep.
Okay, I think the sewer smell is probably, that's probably dealt by now.
Sewer, yeah, it's, it's, it's mainly the roof that's, that's got the neighborhood looking real bad and it's covering that big drain now. And, and, and I know, you know, sympathizing, I know her son passed, you know, God rest his soul, she done put in the rest, but that, that stuff needs to get up. And I don't know if she waiting on insurance, what kind of insurance she got, if she got any at all, but.
I don't think she's got any at all.
We, we ready for it, for that stuff to be moved.
Well, we got the, we got the burning house across the street from there.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
We got that cleared up.
Thank you, we, we talking about the roof, in the yard, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We got that, and I've been trying to contact, uh, Mrs. Johnson, but as far as, uh, with her son, I mean, I mean, I'm gonna send her a letter, but I've been to her door, knocking on the door of her apartment, but we don't, we're procedures without process on the nuisance violation, we'll send her, we'll send her that. She's not responding to anything.
Yep, and, uh, I'm, I'm reminded what the mayor said about cleaning up our town and our neighborhoods and, 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 and putting some paper on, um, some people, but I do sympathize. Um, second, um, question I got, and this is to the council, this is to everybody, and I know you all see what I see, especially with you standing in favor, but my question is, and I'm being asked and getting phone calls about the solar panels out on highway seven, those behind the sheriff office and those that's on down paths, north street, south street, whatever, but the vegetation is gonna push those solar panels up out the ground. And I mean, are we, who's responsible for maintaining that vegetation? I mean, it needs some, some, some poison, I mean, that stuff is, 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 it, it looks real bad.
I understand, but that's, that's the manager, the manager of the solar, they, not that city.
Yep, how, I, I mean, how do we get in touch with them because it's, now, behind the jail, it's not as bad, but that on the highway, it's really beginning to be an eyesore and if we don't get something done pretty quick, them trees gonna push them panels up out of the earth. It's bad. It is bad.
Well, well, there are probably two separate issues, I'm sure Big Ben, because we can contact them, but I would say there's two separate issues, one is whether or not it affects the generation of energy. I mean, so that, that's gonna be in their interest to cure and fix, you're saying it's gonna come up because it comes up out of the ground, you got, you know, an elementary coming up and it takes out the solar panels, they're not able to generate the energy.
Well, let, let, let me.
But that's different from a view, that's different from being a nuisance that they can look at, so those are just a little bit separate, but they're both under, under, under.
Well, well, I'm glad you mentioned nuisance, but let, let, let me put it this way, the solar, solar panels that I do see on the way to work, um, um, down on Bradley Ferry, um, those out there at Aerojet, I mean, you, you, you don't see any vegetation, hadn't seen no vegetation. And, and, you know, if, if it is, the grass is being cut on a normal basis, but this is looking real bad and, and, you know, and I had some concern, citizens call about it and everything and, and I, I, I made, told them I'd make mention and.
We've got that, I'll get back to, uh, and we got contact information for them.
Yeah.
I, I haven't notified this before, that's where I heard, so we have, but we do have contact information.
Yeah, why don't I look at it before you call them and, you know.
I, I had a question for Mr. Wooten before we sit down.
Yes, sir.
We had, we had talked about, uh, and, and he and I discussed, he was just getting here and he's trying to get some things updated with you on verification and, and legalities as far as filing these, did we, did we come to a conclusion on that? And, and I think all of us got houses and places and I got some that burnt so long, I, I don't even notice it sometimes.
Yeah.
So I, I just wanted to know where we are at with that right now as far as getting back into that.
Well, we don't, we got about, it takes about ninety days to condemn a property. And so you, you send out notifications, courtesy notifications and ten days later you go back and recheck. Alright, then you send out a notice of violation, ten days you go back and recheck, alright? After that, you send out, uh, you send out a citation, you gotta catch them home in order to get them a citation, sign the ticket, get them a court date. Then you gotta, then you gotta get a court date, uh, go, go to, go, well, you gotta get a resolution.
I understand, I used to be in a run problem.
So, so, so it's, it's a, I take my hat off to Travis and the guys that was in there, they did it with less people. And, uh, we went through, looked at, we went to look at old ordinances, trying to find stuff that we could go ahead that was already condemned. Well, there's only three properties that I've found so far that we can, that's in the form of an ordinance that we can go ahead and condemn. But with those three properties, we won't be able to tear down but one because of the asbestos.
They do.
Okay, so you can tear down one, if you got three or four on the block, you can tear only one down this year. If it's another across the street, you can, you can, you can get that one, but if they're within the same block, you can't, you can't tear it down, so it's a, it's a learning process and, and we trying to get, we trying to get it moving because every day we, we're going out rechecking, uh, violations that we co- co- we gotta stay on top of, we can't get behind them.
And, and that's why I came to talk, I noticed a lot of legalities in it and, uh.
Well, so, so basically, there's two tracks, I guess, just the council understands, there's two different tracks to deal with it. The one that comes before the council is, is going to be a property that is dilapidated or nuisance, okay? Uh, owner sent a notice, they haven't cured that, did a resolution brought for the council that condemns the property, allows the city to then take out the property, take care of the business property, no grab. Then we come back and we assess the lien against that property. And that's all kind of dealing with what I would call nuisance and, uh, have a resolution to remedy it and actually the city can carry the problem and try to recover it financially. The other track that we mentioned is actually giving someone a citation. The, that process is only working on property where the owner lives there. So if someone has been deceased, we've got problems with that, can't do it, if they're out of state, you can't do it because that's a, that's an actual, uh, violation of city ordinance where the person has to be given a citation in person until it comes to court. So if it's just a house that, that owner has passed away or can't find an owner or the owner lives in Texas, that process of going to court is never gonna be available. Because you don't have a way to get the person served, they've gotta actually be, be served with a ticket. I mean, hand in a ticket, totally to the court. Um, the nuisance track, they don't have to personally have that because that's, that's against the property. So, so when you go to the nuisance route, that is allowing us to fix the problem. There's a lien on the property that says the city spent five thousand dollars to take this house down, there's a lien on that property for five thousand dollars, but you're not ordering any individual to pay that five thousand dollars. So it's really an action, it's what they call in the realm, meaning it's against the property, it's not against the person, it's against the property. Court process is against the person, you're not taking care of the lawn, we're gonna start finding you twenty-five dollars a day, every day you don't pick up the property. So those are two separate processes and it sounded like a part of it was, um, was that the part that comes to court doesn't apply, if someone's passed away, doesn't apply if the owner lives out of state, doesn't apply if it's just air property, which is what lobbies end up being. We can still go the route to technically the property to be a nuisance, but I think the fear there is, is prioritizing and separating up properties so that, um, if we're gonna spend five thousand dollars on a piece of property, helps the neighbors act, helps the neighborhood, but then are we gonna recover that five thousand dollars? If the property was worth five hundred dollars for a lot, let's say it's a house, and that house burns down, city council goes to condemn it, we direct public works will take that property down and we spend five thousand, eight thousand dollars to take the house down, the property's only worth five hundred dollars. And so the problem is, is, is that our expense comes as a lien on the taxes, it comes as a lien on the property, but the property's not worth five thousand dollars, can't get five thousand out of it. And the matter, you can get out of this, how much is it gonna be sold? Because eventually a lien can be foreclosed on or there'll be a tax there. Because eventually a lien can be foreclosed on or move the tax there. But if it's just a lot with no house on it now, it may be worth five hundred. So, so I know that part of the process for code enforcement is to try and figure out which properties are in a neighborhood that that property will have some value afterwards. If it's got value to it, we got more likely of recovering our, our money. And then some of it is, maybe we've got to spend the five thousand dollars and we don't get any recovery from it, but, but that's sort of a decision to prioritize which ones, which ones to do.
Yeah, Mr. Farn, I'm glad, glad you brought that up because I mean, and 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 yep, it's good to pri- prioritize. And you know, just say some of these dilapidated structures or burned structures. Uh some of these neighborhoods um are worth saving. You see what I'm saying? I mean, you know, the, 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 the constituents are trying and you got this burned structure and. Can't find nobody and yep, it might not be, but some neighborhoods are really um worth.
Right.
Saving, you know. People taking care of their property, their lawn and, and they want it gone and, you know, yeah.
And and I, and I will say again, I think one of the issues too is in looking at, at, you know, you know, the public force was using this, about a ten step process. Some of that, as you mentioned, is sending courtesy letters. So there is nothing in our nuisance ordinance that requires that. So, so I think what we have been doing as a matter of policy, as a directive for, for code enforcement. Is, is to give people the benefit of the doubt, send, send a letter that's not certified, then send a courtesy letter that is certified. Okay, neither one of those are required under the ordinance. And so I think part of the discussion, that does require the council, if the council has a policy in place. But I think part of that is between the mayor and code enforcement and just saying, what's our policy? And because, because that's just in turn, that if they wanna just say, here's your certified letter, your house is a nuisance.
Yeah.
And it's coming up before the city council next month to condemn it.
Yeah.
That's in compliance with the ordinance.
So, so.
We have not done that in the past.
So we can do something about all this ducking and dodging.
That, that may streamline the best we're trying to look at is how much we streamline that process and just get it focused. But, but some of that's gonna be, then the council members and more of the regular elected officials. And get the call and say, you know, what happened? I, I thought, you know, I thought we got three letters before it even happened and then you know everything. So, so I think that's, that's, that's the issue is figuring out how.
That, that, that's the note.
That's what he and I, that's what I called him about. I wanted to see if there was a shortcut.
Yeah.
That we can take. I called some of the other cities, cities of, uh city of West Memphis, uh city of Marion, Magnolia. Trying to find out what other, uh what, what their other process was. So we just use what was in place.
Yeah.
Already. But after talking with Attorney Frye, we, I mean, we found out that we can go a different route.
Good, we can do something about this ducking and dodging.
It's gonna come back to you guys.
Yeah.
That's what I'm gonna ask.
Yeah.
We're gonna have to put that in the ordinance because I mean, will it come back and say, well, you, you gave old Bill two, two letters?
You're holding one upon the door.
Well, the nuisance is, it's already there.
No, that's not what I'm asking. I'm asking.
You mean like by policy, we've always done this.
By policy, we've always done this. We set a precedent.
It's a new day.
Right.
You know what I'm saying? I'm just trying to stay out of trouble.
I agree, I agree. And that's what we're looking at. And that's what I agree with that.
You're gonna have to go back in.
It does not have to revisit the ordinance. The ordinance is in place. We're not changing the ordinance that's in place. But, but, but I do think uh some kind of notification maybe on the website or we're gonna be able to try, try to do something.
I've been district court quite a bit, but.
That's right. And, and we've also had a policy in place and, and, and as we explained before, even when a property is condemned.
Right.
Code enforcement generally continues to try and work with that person. So, so it comes before the council, and the city council says, okay, take that structure down. What we've done, the passage of code enforcement, then have letters to go to the homeowner and say, if you don't do this, we're still gonna give you another, something there or two, you still got two. So that is still being in place. Uh but, but I think we're working on trying to streamline that a little bit, but. When you're talking about deferring a, a property of nuisance, it is uh, you know, it's, it's, it's going against individual real property rights. You know, there's certainly a strong, strong tradition in right to maintain the property. So we gotta comply, we give it a notice. So that's, and, and most of them, I would say, I would say the majority. The issue is owner is not present and it's not only that's there that they get to deal with. The problem is gonna be air property. No one knows who owns it. They're in California. If they know who it is or some cousin is kinda taking care of it. That's what most of the market, the homeowner that lives in the neighborhood and they've got uh, you know, tires outside and they've got some trash. Those are an issue, but, but I really think that's the minority problem. Those we can deal with, but you got someone to talk to. The bigger problem is just, what do we do with this property? We, we don't have anybody at the table to talk to. It's just, we gotta go through the process, be sure of protecting the rights. But we don't want uh someone coming up after the fact and says, hey, you took my house down. And we've had uh or other shit.
We've had a couple cases.
You know, you start dealing with someone's property, we gotta be sure that we've given reasonable notice, attempted to look at the airs, attempted to notify people and just give them the process. So it is, it is a process.
Alright, is there any other business before the council on tonight?
I got something else. I wanna end on a good note uh before we adjourn. Um I know she's not here, um Miss Charlotte Young, um. James Bell, uh First Friday on last week, awesome. Um a lot of vendors, a lot of people having a good time and just want to. Applaud them and looking for the next First Friday. And also want to applaud Sister Angela Snowden. She's working the camera back there. Uh for the sun, saving our sons and daughters three on three basketball tournament that you put on down at the park, the other uh. Give her a hand, she does awesome job, awesome turnout, um third number of good things. Thank you so much. For investing in the uh community, you and your committee and also thank you for your church with it.
A lot of people work together.
Yeah, and with that said, I'd like to make the motion.
Have something I'd like to say.
Yes, sir. No, 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 no.
Uh I have some information to bring. Uh we're still looking at it, preparing uh to make a presentation here to try and. Change the name of Cook Street to Mr. Alaska Bell, uh senior. Uh he did some great things here in this city. And uh we're doing a lot more research on it, uh myself, the African American Historical Society. Uh we're still canvassing those people on that other end of that street down there. And uh hopefully we'll bring a presentation to this board next month to try and get that uh street name changed in his honor.
Let me, we, uh go ahead, no, no, no. I wanted to uh mention that um most recently, uh I spoke with uh Chief Woody. Uh actually, I talked to him on the day about uh possibly an oversight committee or board. Uh when we were dealing with some of the things across the nation with police and he would be willing to uh consider uh such a board in our community. If people had questions or challenges to uh preempt going uh on Facebook or something like that. A group that we'd be willing to submit to at the local level to discuss some of the challenges that may, that may be before us in our city. And uh so if you're interested in that, I'd like for you to give us a call. I, I'll, uh contact us at one camden AR at gmail dot com. We also asked our community to contact us about housing in our community and, and actually use the same email address. We didn't get a lot of traction with that, but uh we've had about three groups that have researched our community. And uh if we can get some investors and some interested parties to help with housing, it'll be a, a big deal. I think a little over a hundred people have possibly come to our community uh as interns and in other ways. Out there uh to, I'm out there to hire an industrial partner, then some people come in for the summer. And many of those people are driving in and out. And we need to start working on the housing issue that we're up against. Recently, when some of the apartment complexes decided to uh do something different and go another way. Many of our own citizens had to move to other cities if they wanted to remain in public housing or if they needed somewhere to stay. And we can fix that, but we have to start working on it now. So about three different groups have already done research on our area. And I'd like to prepare a presentation with those groups to be able to, uh for our, for us to get some buy-in. I don't have a single way of communicating. So whenever I do the broadcast on Friday or whenever we come to city council, that's pretty much all I have. Your paper comes out once a week. And so I don't really have a million ways. This is all I have as a way, as a vehicle of communication. So if you're not responding, then I'll probably end up responding to the people who are contacting us. Then you'll say, nobody told me. And if you say that, this is the only way I have is if you give me an email address. So that I can contact you and we can start communicating because we wanna prepare a presentation. But I don't wanna have tho- that many people presenting and only three people on the call. And so we've been holding it off. But I'd like for some of the investors and some of you who are interested, uh to please contact us at one camden AR at gmail dot com. So that we can arrange a meeting um to, to talk more about housing in our community. Is there anything else before us? I'd like to make a motion with you. Is he adjourned?